My name's Ken Foreman, I'm the current chair. I'll begin by asking everyone please to silence your cellphones. And I'll do the same. And then introduce the board, so from your left Jerry Potamus, who's associate member of the board, TJ Hurry, who's vice chair of the board, Kim Bealan, clerk of the board, Ed Van Curran, voting member, Paul Murphy, voting member, and Robert Dugan, who's associate member of the board, also of course Sarri Budra, who's our zoning administrator.
You were late. Megan Petiti.
Okay. Who's recording secretary tonight.
From now on.
From now on, okay.
Unless she gets upset with you guys.
All right. Please don't. So as I'm sure many of you know, we're charged with applying the zoning bylaws for the town of Falmouth, considering requests for special permits, variances, appeals. As provided by those bylaws that have been approved by town meeting and also by the attorney general's office for the Commonwealth. And our decisions are made through a public hearing process. So to begin each hearing, the clerk will read a public announcement of the hearing and present any pertinent information from the files such as referrals from town departments or correspondence, summaries of correspondence. Then we will grant the applicant or the applicant's representative 15 minutes to present, to make a presentation about the project. And we can extend that time by vote of the board if the applicant feels they need additional time. We will then question the applicant, and then we'll invite the public to comment. So if you wish to comment, please, when the time comes, raise your hand and then go to the podium, state your name for the record, and we would like you to try to confine your comments to two minutes. If the board feels we have enough information, we'll close the hearing. If we feel we need additional information, we can continue the hearing to a date certain in the future. And then we will have board discussion, you know, if we close the hearing, probably make a motion, either in favor or opposed, with various findings and conditions, and then for special permits, a four to one supermajority is required for approval. So tonight, we have four special permit hearings. And also during the open meeting, there's some discussion about previous 40B project comprehensive permits that came before us. So let's begin, I guess first, hearing is 09-1-17.
No.
Oh, we have a continuation. I'm sorry. Yep, we have a continuation, thank you. 08-217 Lawrence Lynch.
Yep, so we received a request from Attorney Edward Kirk on behalf of the applicant requesting that we continue this matter to March 1st, 2018.
So then we need a motion to that effect.
Make a motion to move it to 18th March?
Yep.
March 1st.
March 1st?
Yeah, 2018.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so Ed and TJ moved and seconded to take this up on March 1st here in Town Hall, 6:30. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So that motion carries. March 1st. So now we come to the first of the special permit hearings, which is Bogosian Development, 661 Main Street, Falmouth, a special permit to add a second floor creating seven apartments. Yep.
Female persons deemed affected, oh.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I just want to make a disclosure regarding this application. I'm included on the abutters mailing list because I have property at 596 Main Street. But even though I've been included on the abutters list, I feel like I can review the application objectively.
Female persons deemed affected by the Board of Appeals under Section 11 of Chapter 40A of the Massachusetts General Laws. You are hereby notified that Bogosian Development LLC of Falmouth, Massachusetts, apply to the zoning Board of Appeals for a special permit pursuant to Sections 240-3C and 240-240 G1B of the Code of Falmouth to construct a second floor addition creating seven apartment units on subject property known as 661 Main Street, Falmouth, Massachusetts. For referrals, engineering, I'll just read this. This application was reviewed for the planning board under a site plan review, see attached memo. Main Street is a public right-of-way in the area. No alterations are proposed to the right-of-way. Any changes within the right-of-way would require filing a permit with the engineering division. Any connections or alterations to public utilities would require permission from the appropriate town department. The project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property abutters or rights-of-way. We recommend that all of the roof stormwater runoffs be diverted to dry wells. And there is a planning board review memo in here which is available to be reviewed. The zoning board's office in the file, it's a pretty lengthy. Concom did not see drainage control for proposals. Stormwater should be controlled on property to avoid adding or reducing onto Main Street water. Please see attached comments provides planning board on October 4th, 2017. Comments still apply. We received a planning board referral, which again is of some life, and let's see. Falmouth Fire Department correspondence on October 20th regarding the six items. Another comment from planning applicants before planning board for site plan review on October 24th, 2017. Accessories just put "not applicable." We had 11 letters of no objection. Is this 11 letters of no, of support? It almost looks like it says 111.
No.
Of support, and I've never seen anything, but I'm assuming it's 11.
Yes. 11 or two, depending on if she used Roman numerals.
And Attorney Clower, you're here for the applicant.
I am. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Kevin Clower. I'm an attorney of Amen Clower Law Firm here in Falmouth, and I represent the applicant Bogosian Development LLC, who is prospective buyer of this property, representing Bogosian Development, is Mark Bogosian, with me this evening. Before I begin, I did want to note that as we've been working through this with the planning board, through site plan review, we've been working with both the board and the abutters, and there's been some minor revisions to the plan. By oversight, these plans, these revised plans were not submitted to the ZBA. I did bring copies to submit this evening, and will submit with supplemental full-size copies shortly. The changes to the plan are minor, and I'm happy to go over them later on throughout the presentation. That, I apologize. This property, 661 Main Street, is located on Main Street. It's actually located kind of off Main Street, or behind Main Street to some extent. It's on a parcel of 40,941 square feet, and it's located entirely in the business redevelopment zoning district. The property is abutted to the south and west by the B2 zoning district. It's located in the middle of a pretty developed section of 28. It's abutted to the north by a number of commercial buildings, which include Hubbard Paint, a law office, a small strip mall, Cape Cod, the restaurant, and the old Cooperative Bank Cape Cod building. It's located, abutted to the west by a hair salon, to the east by DeAngelo's, and south, to the south by the Falmouth Housing Authority's housing complex, Windfall Market, and the Overflow Island Queen parking area. Presently, there's a 9,000 square foot, one-story building on the lot. Nonconforming with regards to law coverage by structure being 22.2 percent where 20% is allowed by right, and law coverage by structures paving and parking being 61.6 percent where 60% is allowed by right. It's otherwise conforming as to front, rear, and side yard setbacks. The applicant is proposing to add a second floor and to redo the exterior facade of the building, creating several, seven new residential dwelling units on that second floor, and in doing so would seek to retain the existing commercial units on the first floor. This application does require a special permit from this board. Requires a special permit under both Sections 240-3C for alteration to a pre-existing nonconforming structure, and also under Section 240G1B, which allows in a business redevelopment district for the ZBA to grant or allow multifamily use greater than six units per acre. First, I will address 243C. As mentioned, it allows for pre-existing nonconforming structures to be altered by special permit, provided that those structures are not substantially more detrimental than what currently exists. The board has asked to consider the standards of 240-216, and whether or not the alteration creates a new dimensional nonconformity impairs views of vistas, reasonably conforms to the average dimensions in the neighborhood. I believe that this particular property and proposal does meet those standards. As I've said, it's located in the business redevelopment district, a highly developed portion of section of Route 28, and the proposed development is in line with the intent of the business redevelopment zone. It's creating a mixed-use building, having both commercial and residential uses, and further seeks to extend the downtown Main Street corridor further to the east. The proposal does not impact any of the existing nonconformities, does not create any new dimensional nonconformities, it does not impair any views of vistas, and it does reasonably conform to the average dimensions in the neighborhood and as well to the intent of the zoning district. Beyond that, it meets the standards of 240-216. It's worth pointing out that this is on Town Sewer, of course. Given these existing conditions, the zoning district and proposed redevelopment, I think it's clear that this proposal is not substantially more detrimental than what currently exists. As to 240-240G1B, wherein the ZBA may grant a special permit for multifamily using with density greater than six units per acre, that permit may be granted when it's determined that the public good is served, that the business zone area is not adversely affected, and the use is permitted in the zone and not obnoxious to a multifamily use. This property again is on a lot of 40,941 square feet, which is a pretty substantially sized lot for that area. The bylaw allows for one apartment per approximately 5,450 square feet. We're seeking seven, which requires about 38,000. We have beyond that. As I've noted, this is in line with the intent and the purpose of the business redevelopment district, as it creates a mixed-use space and extends the Main Street and downtown corridor. The addition of the housing is a public good honoring the intent of the bylaw. It improves an underutilized, highly visible building, and it redevelops it into an attractive, more functional space in use. And the multifamily housing is not negative to the business redevelopment districts or to the abutting business two districts. One item of note on this is that based on the existing conditions, there are 26 parking spaces currently, with the proposed seven additional bedrooms that would require 10 spaces. 240-240J allows for the planning board to reduce the requirement by up to 50 percent when the uses are complementary in nature. Remaining at 26 spaces, which we have proposed to do, is a reduction of only 28 percent, well below the 50 percent the planning board made for them. We have requested this relief from the planning board. As was noted, we have been through site plan review with the planning board, and had the opportunity to review a draft of the decision, and was hopeful that it would issue on Tuesday of this week. Unfortunately, there was a quorum issue, and we were continued until next Tuesday. There are a few small changes to the plan from what was initially submitted. The parking in front of the building has been shifted to the west slightly to alleviate a pinch point, as was noted by the planning board, and we've noted an eight-foot right-of-way on the westerly side of the property, which provides access to some of the abutters to the west and south. Based on the foregoing reasons, I believe that this project is eligible for, and that you should grant a special permit to allow the proposed renovations. I appreciate your time this evening, and I'd be glad to address any questions or concerns you might have.
Okay. Robert?
Just for clarification, so on the square footage downstairs, you said it was 9,000.
It's 9,132 square feet.
All right, because the application said 8,600, so that's a...
The existing footprint on the building is 9,103 square feet. That's based, that's taken from the site plan. The interior square footage, I think, is 8,000 and change.
It is 8,600.
The footprint is 9,100.
There was a mention in the notes from engineer regarding planning about handicap spaces that there was only one, and they were suggesting two.
There is, there is a handicap space being added on the easterly portion of the lot. I don't believe there's currently an intent to add a second handicap space. I believe that we've met the requirements, but we're happy to take a look at that. I'm not sure that the existing site plan allows for much change in that. It would be a further reduction of parking if we did so.
When you come in that main entrance off of Main Street, that first parking space that you, that's marked on the plan, how much room do they have to?
That's one of the things that was changed on, that was one of the changes to the plan.
Okay, that's the one they shifted over?
That was shifted to the west to create a wider passageway.
And does the, does the property that abuts that entrance have any rights to that entrance at all? Because I noticed when I went by that they seem to be parking using that entrance as part of their...
No, I don't believe so. That's part of the lot that provides entrance in. It's not, it's not a, it's not a common right-of-way in that, in that center point to the, on the westerly portion of the lot, there is a right-of-way which is not exclusive that some of the neighbors use, but the center area is part of the lot that just kind of pork chops to the north.
And on the right, so on the right-of-way that's shown in the plan, then is that a recorded right-of-way? You just went by the...
It's, there is a land court decision from 1967, which granted a prescriptive easement for the right-of-way, but it was not shown on any plans. So we're going to submit a plan. That's part of what we're working on with the abutters, is submitting a plan to codify the right-of-way, which has never been done.
And which, which properties are mentioned in the prescriptive easement?
I don't know. I don't know that answer, it's dumb, I have.
That's all I have to know, thanks.
I have no questions. Was there any consideration? In, in the file, there's a letter, there's, one of the tenants there now uses the back door for loading, which I think is a good idea to eliminate traffic in the front because it is tight, but it's not paved in the back, and it kind of looks like a, stuff has been dropped there, junk out there now. And I would think that that should probably be paved, and it would encourage people to use the back entrance.
I would love to, but adding paving would be a nonconformity, would be an increase of a nonconformity.
Well, even if it was gravel or something to...
I think we'd be, we'd be happy to do something along those lines.
It would encourage people to use their rear entrances for loading.
We'd be happy to do something along those lines, but the addition of paving would increase the existing nonconformity, which we can't do.
Also, the other question I had was, is there any consideration of putting an elevator in there? It would open up the rental of those apartments to people that might need an elevator to get to the second floor.
I don't think it had been, it's been considered, I don't think it was decided to go that way as it chews up a lot of the existing space that's, first tenants already have.
The new elevators today, the modern elevators, don't take up that much space. They don't need a separate machinery room. Might be worth looking into because it would...
Certainly.
Open it up to people that might not be able to handle a set of stairs in their elderly years, huh?
Certainly, we can certainly take a look at that.
That's all.
Okay, thank you. Kim?
Sure, one for clarification, these were Roman numerals. So there's two letters of no objection and three letters of support, which makes much more sense than 111.
I like 11 too.
Yeah? All right. Lot frontage, that's a nonconformity as well?
It is, and that's an existing nonconformity.
Yep, so 50, about 50 feet?
It's above, it's, I can tell you exactly what it is. It is 51.3 feet.
Okay. And that doesn't create any concerns from the fire department or anything like that?
They didn't raise it as a concern, no.
Okay. All right. Okay, so you said that there's 26 spaces currently. How many retail spa, or spate units are there in the building currently?
There are four. There's a track club, there's a thrift shop, there is the proposed brewery, and then there's a currently empty space.
Okay, and so it's proposed to remain the same on the first level? Okay. So with those uses that you just said, maybe three retail, one restaurant use or brewery use, whatever, okay.
And the brewery, the brewery is actually permitted as a retail use.
Okay.
It's viewed as a retail operation.
Okay. All right, so no additional parking spaces is what you're saying for the seven additional residences?
That's correct. It's worth pointing out that currently, we're showing, we're showing the spots on the easterly side. Those are being added. They're not, that was part of the brewery's proposal, which is separate from this application, but that is a recent addition of those spots on the easterly side.
Okay. Would there be designated resident parking?
Well, it would be, no, because it would be shared parking. So the planning board is allowed to reduce requirement for complimentary uses. These uses are largely daytime uses, whereas the residential would be largely an evening or nighttime use.
What about on the weekends?
I mean, I think a lot of the commercial space would be largely a weekday usage. I don't, I think the brewery perhaps would have some weekend followings, probably. I would go there on a weekend.
I would think so.
I'd like to go there during the week, but I don't think that would be too...
So there's no, so there won't be any designated, these spaces are residential spaces?
No, I don't think we can because of the shared, the shared nature of the parking.
Is there any affordable housing component for these units?
There's none proposed, but the rental, the amount of the rental would be in line with an affordable housing, but as you know, the requirement of affordable housing brings in a layer of oversight and permitting and added cost that starts making it prohibitive pretty quickly.
Okay, and what's the breakdown in the unit? Sorry, I didn't see the floor plan, I know it's...
I believe there's three two-bedrooms and four-one bedrooms.
And what's the height of the structure?
I don't have it shown on this plan, Ken, and I'm happy to give you the exact number, but I believe it's 24 feet.
Okay. Was any consideration given to making it a pitched roof rather than a flat roof?
What, what was the background?
For the record, Mark Bogosian, the owner of this project, we decided to go with a flat roof based off keeping the height a good amount below the 35 feet, and based off this, you know, the long nature of the building, we thought it would be a nice facade to just add some moldings above it. It also stays in line with some of the buildings that are right next door.
Okay, thank you.
I think the intent is not to have this loom over surrounding buildings.
Right. Is there, what's the proposed material? Is it for the exterior? It looks like that.
The proposed exterior will be a mix of white composite and natural cedar shakes.
Okay.
Or with a stained cedar shake.
All right. Looks nice. I have just a couple others. So where's the access for the residential units?
So there's a few access points, and if you look at the, if you look at the plans, there are, I'm trying to make sure I'm looking at it from the right direction here, there are three access points, two access points from the front and two from the rear.
And those are, that's all for the residential?
Yes.
Units? I might be looking here. Okay. I don't think it shows on that plan.
If I may?
Yes, thank you. Sorry, I didn't have...
So please, those are the access points.
Okay, all right. Thank you. They're on these plans, not on that. Yeah.
Or is it all on the second floor?
Okay. Is the intention at this time for Bogosian Development to maintain ownership of the building?
Yes.
And then act as landlord?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
For a long, long, long time.
Well, I'll put that in the decision if we approve.
By condition maybe.
Yeah, we'll condition for a long, long, long time.
I'd rather not have it be a condition.
Okay, I like it, I'm not...
But that can be the intent, sure.
So I think we already touched on this loading zone, there's really no designated loading zone?
No, I mean, I think the brewery has, has an access point to the easterly side. There are doors to the brewery on facing that, that easterly side yard line, but there is no designated loading zone because I don't think we're having any deliveries that are large enough in nature to require its own loading dock.
Okay, so let me ask you about the brewery, and I understand it's a, let's say it's a use, I think it is a use a lot as a right there retail. So is the idea to make brewery on site, make beer on site, would that be shipped off?
So I don't want to get too far afield because that's not part of this, but I'm happy to address this.
Well, this is why I'm asking. I'm not asking because I really care what the brewery is doing. I care about trucks coming in and out of this property.
Sure, they're not, they're not wholesaling from the property.
Okay.
Then that's prohibited under the bylaw. They cannot wholesale from the property. They will do largely retail sales.
Would supplies or anything have to be trucked in?
They will, I'm sure they will have some deliveries, but I don't think we're looking at, we're not looking at an 18-wheeler bringing these things in.
Have you prepared like a truck plan or a truck access returning plan?
No, because the brewery is not necessarily part of this application. It's subject, you know, obviously it's part of the same building, but the brewery is a byright use on, on the property that regardless as to whether or not this special permit is granted will be taking place.
Yeah, but I'm just thinking that you'd have more cars...
I also don't want to speak too out of turn because I'm not, you know, although I, though I do represent the brewery under a separate, under separate matters, I'm not representing this night, I don't want to speak out of turn.
Okay, well, let's forget the brewery. There's four other, three other retail spaces there that I would think to some extent would have deliveries. I understand this use has been ongoing, but we're here, we're trying to make it better on site, so I just...
Absolutely.
It might be helpful to have a plan showing churning and ability to do so with the parking spaces on property.
I've been working with the brewery and to help them with their concept with the build-out, and everything that I've talked about and just even from seeing their design, they don't have large deliveries, so they're really storing, it's more as you needed. So as far as the delivery nature, this is something that, you know, it's, it's the next level from doing it as if you were brewing something at home, then you'd move into a place. So it's really not intended to be these in-and-out deliveries. That's why it's not a wholesale brewery, it's more what they brew has to be kind of carried out in cars, so what they could put in, pickup truck, bam.
Okay. Well, let me ask you a question. So Kevin, you had said, or Attorney Clower, I don't want to be informal, you had said that some of these spaces aren't painted right now on the site.
Correct.
Where are those? Which ones are those?
So these, these spaces, the five spaces that are listed as not striped on the easterly side, and then, I'm not sure if the spaces on the, I'm sorry, I misspoke, that's the westerly side. I'm not sure if the spaces on the easterly side have been striped yet, but that we're in the process of doing that.
What I think would be helpful, and the board can talk about, others might not feel the same way, but you're inviting people to park where maybe there's not designated parking spaces currently, might be helpful to see...
We're happy to stripe them.
No, no, I, yeah, I think you need to stripe them. Well, I think I would like to see a truck turning plan for the property. But that's just, we can talk about that, the other board members not, might not feel the same way.
Perhaps we could allow for an area behind the building in this area over here for a larger turnaround. And that would be something to be very minimal to kind of make for enough of a good area if anybody did come in here and... make for enough of a good area that anybody could come in here and they come to the end of the building and they'd be able to have a good space to turn around in and then head back out. So we would be happy to add that.
I think the board should talk about it, and we'll see how everybody else feels. Thank you. And then the other thing was the dumpster. So you're still maintaining just one dumpster on the property?
Correct.
Okay. And the idea would be for the residents to put their trash in that?
Mm-hmm.
And how often would that be picked up?
We have a very similar building where we have our showroom, and I own that building as well. It has four residents as well as four retail. And we do weekly right now, and we have no problem, so I would imagine weekly will be the same.
Okay. All right, that's all I had for the time.
And to that, I think if the need proves to be more, then it would be done more.
Thank you.
TJ?
Attorney Clower, can you address both engineering and Concombs referrals regarding drywells and?
The drainage has been addressed with revised plans. So that, that was submitted to the planning board, and that's part of the plans that were submitted to you, as you.
So it'll remain on property?
There's a lot of drainage.
And the current structure as it is now, can it support a second story? Or would some sort of reinforcements be required?
A little bit of both is the answer. There was a letter submitted from a structural engineer yesterday describing the method, methodology that would be used to create the second floor.
Thank you.
Jerry, anything?
Don't question. I noticed, so you are doing some landscaping improvements, is that correct?
Yes.
Maybe Mr. Bogosian could summarize those for us. Or you could, whoever, whoever feels.
So we have a landscaping plan showing the improvements to the front of the building. Part of the changes that were made were additional improvements along entryway, along the front. They're adding bushes and some small trees. Nothing that will impede views around corners, but just to improve the look coming in. And then here, you'll see the landscaping that's done between the entrance areas for each of the buildings as well as the entrance areas for the residences, and then a longer strip here along the front of the brewery.
I guess my primary concern is the, whether there be some form of designated parking for the residences. I know that's been brought up, but that, they could, for example, there could be signage that says for, over certain times of the day, they're reserved for residents.
I think that's a perfectly reasonable.
And so that, you know, if someone's there later, you know, they don't come home and find. And I'm wondering if there might be a few of these spaces that would be permanently restricted to residents. Because, you know, not necessarily all that would be required under the bylaw, but there's no reason to necessarily assume.
I, I don't, I don't know that we can, under, under the provision of the bylaw that allows for the shared parking with a reduction from the planning board. If it was, the reduction was being requested from the ZBA, I think we absolutely could. But I don't want to, I, and I simply don't know the answer, Ken. Whether or not under the planning board's reduction, we're allowed to restrict those uses, because then they're no, no longer complimentary. The whole, the whole purpose of the bylaw is that.
Yeah, no, I remember it well.
Is that, that the uses, the uses are complimentary in nature, and if we restrict one for only residences, well, it's no longer complimentary then.
Yeah, I don't know that, that it required all parking spaces to be shared, but maybe that could be explored. I'm just very concerned that, you know, the middle of the day, someone who lives there comes back, who knows why, they're ill, they're whatever, they ain't got no place to park.
I've been out to the site quite, quite a bit over the past few months as we've worked on this. And anecdotally, I would tell you that the parking has not been an issue.
But this brewery is not going concern.
Well, that's true, but it's, but it's.
And I suspect, I just suspect it's going to be a very popular destination.
I hope it is.
So, I don't know. All right, I guess that's.
That's it for me.
I have, just a follow-up. Could you just touch on the site lighting, what's going to be provided?
I'm not sure if we included that on any of our plans. There's a lighting legend shown on the landscaping plan, which shows wall sconces and wall lights around the building. Whereas all the parking is essentially up against, or the majority of the parking is up against the building. I think the intent is that most of it would be lit in that manner.
So no, yeah, what the heck are they, like light poles anywhere or?
That wasn't the intent.
Oh, I see those, okay. Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, does that do it for the board for the moment?
Just a, just a follow-up question, on that handicap space, is that van compliant?
I, I believe so, it, I mean, it meets, well, that, that's a question for the engineer.
Well, I'm just asking because you, instead of two spaces, you're doing one, so.
I, I believe, I believe yes. I'm being told yes.
And is, is there any reason they decided to put it at the end of the building versus in the middle of the building for more access?
The, the middle of the building and the existing parking spaces, and the addition of it there would eliminate an existing parking space. So then, those, those, the end of the building and the ones that are being created recently, and it was just easier to lay it out that way.
So if there's, is, where that landscaping is shown on that side, if somebody was coming out of a van, let's say they was wheelchair accessible, is there any kind of a walkway, or do they have to go through the parking lot around that landscaping section?
I'm not sure I'm following wrong.
Okay, see on the, on the right-hand side at the top?
Yep.
Is, is there a, is there a sidewalk there or?
So this, this is shown as a sidewalk here with an entryway into the brewery.
But then it stops across the front.
It does stop across the front, so this, that would be through the parking lot.
So they have to go through the parking lot that acts as.
So, that's going to be part of the pavement, so this is meant to be a separate sidewalk. It's from different, different surfaces, and it's likely that it would be a blue stone. Here is going to be part of the pavement, but not part of the rear end driving. So it's going to come up further, be like a berm.
So would somebody be able to, from that handicap space?
They'd be able to.
Go through with a wheelchair without being in the actual?
Without being in the driveway.
Without being the driveway spot?
To be part of the same. They'd be part of the same without be, they'd be part of the pavement, it wouldn't be a separate material. But just meant so they could smoothly transition, go down and then transition back.
Okay, and then on that, on that easement, does this property have any rights from that easement to Main Street? Or is that separate?
It's not an exclusive easement. I don't know that it's been used in that manner.
I was just wondering for traffic coming in and out, are they, are they exiting on the other side, or they have to go through that one?
I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to be directing, I wouldn't want to be directing traffic from our site through that easement area. I don't think that's, that's permitted under the script of easement, the way we're granted.
So is there, so is there anything you can do so that it doesn't happen? I mean, you can't close it off, right, so?
I mean, we could, we could sign it saying access for residents only, we could, you know, various, various steps that could be taken. Could we stop someone if they really wanted to? Probably not.
No, I just meant signage in general.
And just to discourage it? No, I, I think that's, that's appropriate, reasonable question, request.
That's, that's all I have.
Okay, let's see if the, if there's any comment or question from the public. Anybody out there want to comment on this project? Nope? Okay?
Courtney.
One? Yep.
My name's Courtney Bird. I live on Sympowisett Road, not too far from you, Ken.
I know.
I'm also president of the Falmouth Track Club and one of the tenants in the, in 661 Main. I wrote a letter, which I believe one of you referred to as far as the, I don't know which sub, part of it was. And I, it was obviously the proposed construction, adding a second floor, you know, obviously causes a little heartburn to anyone who's a tenant, wondering what's the impact of that. We met with Mark and, and we were encouraged by the methodologies employing, which is essentially to build a superstructure over the existing building. And then, so it doesn't interfere with our operations any more than it would be minimally with any construction project. So from our point, we can obviously live that, we'll live with that. We've been there since nineteen, uh, 2012. And so we've kind of had a chance to firsthand observe, you know, what happens there in terms of parking. And obviously, your focus is on, you know, whether or not the number of parking places proposed with additional apartments on the top is going to have a, cause heartburn to everybody involved. And my feeling is, having seen the use of that, and again, it's anecdotal, but my feeling is, having seen the use of it, I, I don't see it being a problem. The current tenants are, you know, essentially use the, including us, use it during the day. We're not a retail operation, so in a normal course of things, we don't have lots of people coming in and out and the need for parking. Maybe twice a week, three times a week, we have one or two cars there. Although we're entitled, I think, to four spaces, so I'm told by Suri. The only time that it, our use becomes greater is around the time of the Cape Cod Marathon, because we take deliveries of stuff in and out of there. We transport things to the venues, we bring it back, and we mostly run it through the back part of the, the back door. Which we designed, based on the fact that the door was there when we moved in, we designed our storage so that you could get access from that rather than coming through the front. My sense is, having seen the usage by other tenants, and there are doors in the back all the way around, I think most people use it as a kind of a emergency exit, if there was a fire or something. I think we're the only ones that back around the corner and, and use it to get storage in and out. So my sense is, yeah, there's going to be more parking there, but I, I don't see it as a huge issue. And we've been negotiating with the brewery, although that's not in part of that. We're gonna, we're trying to get them to put a line in, down to our office. But that's another story. Anyway, it's a good project, I support it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Let me just clarify for the record that when Mr. Bird came in and spoke with me, we based the parking on approximately 1,000 square feet. I think our off, excuse me, the Falmouth Track Club office is a little over 900 square feet, so it roughly comes out to four, based on the bylaw. That's where that came from.
I think this is going to be, hopefully, a really great project to take a building that I think could use a, use some love and a facelift and to put some energy into making it nicer for the people that are there, the current tenants, as well as provide some really good housing for people that live and are part of the Falmouth community.
Okay. Well, let's see if the board feels they have enough information at this point.
You would have to continue this because we don't have a site plan review decision.
Okay, so we want to wait for that?
Yes, we have, yes.
So let's, do we have enough information from the applicant at this point?
I think so.
I wanted to see, I mean, maybe no one else cares. I wanted to see some sort of truck turning plan. Or modify plan to show a turnaround. I think that's tight, and there's going to be new cars on the side. I was also thinking during the last, the public comments, they're proposing lawn to the rear of the building. Maybe that doesn't make enormous sense.
Although they're already at full lot coverage by parking, paving, and structure.
You could do an impervious, I mean, excuse me, impervious.
Didn't they agree to gravel?
Yeah.
In the back?
Yeah.
I just, yeah.
Could we propose creating some crushed stone in the back that would allow, and maybe put a board of gravel stones around it in order to keep that stone away from the lawn in the back on site, you know? Over in this area, we have a pretty good amount of land here, and there's nothing that is out here that would be harmed by adding enough area on both sides so it wouldn't be strike parking, but it would allow for somebody that did come in to have plenty of space on both sides to turn around.
So you're talking about a turnaround, a complete drive-through?
Correct.
Because I think one of the concerns that she has is if a truck, like the Track Club, even though the trucks that deliver to the Track Club aren't large, the turning radius, if the cars are parked where the parking spots show, the turning radius of a larger truck clearing the corner of the building versus the parking spot at each end of that building, it's going to be tough on your west side, it looks like. Possibly not so tough on the east side. Is that what you're speaking of?
Yeah, yeah.
If you put gravel down, or truck stone down.
The turning radius as well.
So you could make a circle around.
You wouldn't have to turn around.
But again, that turning radius, if there's cars parked at each end of that building.
Well, that's, I think it would be nice to see that, I mean, I don't.
I believe Kimberly's talking about.
That could interfere with the dumpster.
You'll relocate the dumpster to the corner.
You might want to think about it, I think that's what the board's asking.
So, Suri, the planning board's doing site plan?
Yes.
Correct? So maybe we could communicate some of these concerns to the planning board, and incorporate them into the site plan.
So your concerns are truck deliveries to and from the site, turning radius, and designation of parking spaces?
But we, we're not specifying which size truck.
A residential.
I mean, that's limited by the space, when you say truck. You know it's not an 18-wheeler, quarter ton, half ton? Oh, it is what it is.
I'll just ask the specific questions. I think that's best, and let the planning board give us an answer.
Okay.
The other thing I think, I don't know, I'm sorry.
It's all right.
I think it might be helpful to see what Mr. Bogosian was referring to with respect to the handicap accessibility. That area kind of out in front of the, if there can be some sort of designation for that.
We would be happy to have that, you know, profiled onto the site plan.
Yeah.
So that way, it would show clearly where that is going to be.
I just, I want to go back to, I don't want to belabor this, but I wanted to clear, is the board making the passage of a truck behind the building requirement now? Because I, I struggle to see how we show a truck turnaround that might meet the town's turning radius requirements. And I don't think it's an issue because we're not looking to have truck deliveries of that nature here.
I think the issue is that, as Courtney stated, they drop off at the back of Falmouth Track Club. So is it driving straight through, and if it's a bigger truck instead of a box truck, will it make that with the parking? Because there is no parking there now, I think that's the question.
But, you know, the building exists where it exists currently. And, and again, the delivery or something back there isn't necessarily impacted by the, by the request of the permit.
I understand, but in the event, I think, is what we're speaking of.
Yep.
May I speak to the parking or that truck issue?
Yeah.
I, again, it's based on experience, and, and I, I understand your concern, Kimberly. I think that's a legitimate one. All I know is in the five years we've been there, and we've had to bring in, you know, rental trucks, six, 24-footers and this sort of thing for short-term use. And, you know, it's never been a problem to make them work and to get them in and out of that whole area. I do think that Mr., that Mark ought to look a little bit at his landscape plan. I don't happen to have it in front of me, but there, there is, by, by, perhaps you need to relook at the landscaping so as to kind of square this off more along the lines of the way it is, just to allow a little bit more flexibility for things like turning radius of vehicles and the like. I know you're trying to, well, you know, get as much green space as you can, but if you follow what I mean, right now, what that's going to do is push these cars further back toward the property line, and that makes the turning radius tight. So you might want to look at that, but I don't think that's a deal breaker. And as I say, we've been able to go to work for five years, so I don't see it being a big problem. And I don't think the brewery on the other end is, it's such a small operation, that they're not going to be bringing 18-wheelers in there, so.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I just think my concern, and I know, Attorney Clower, you just said, you know, this use has been ongoing, it doesn't, but you're, you're striping more spaces than are currently striped. currently striped, so you're formalizing.
That's not part of, we're not doing that as part of this application. We're not, because that was, that was proposed by the brewery under a previous.
Right, but you're, okay, so then let's, we can talk about, you're adding seven residential units to this property, you're creating a mixed commercial residential project, and I think it's important, certainly to our considerations under the bylaw, whether or not those uses are, are consistent with each other and can exist harmoniously. So I, I just think you're adding these, you're striping these spaces, I think that it would be helpful, certainly won't be detrimental, to, to just investigate it a little bit further. If you come back and say we can't do anything, then I think we analyze that at that time. But I, I don't think it hurts to look at that.
We'd be, we'd be happy to look at the options, and also the options of crushed owners, some other materials that may not meet a specific radius but would allow, if, you know, Courtney was pulling in there backing up, he wouldn't be on grass, he'd be on some nice crushed stone with a good denser base, so.
I understand it's not a daily occurrence. I just, from my perspective, it would be helpful to have that information, that's all.
Come take a look.
Thank you.
All right, so, we await, let's, we're going to continue this, so there'll be another crack at it, and most of the issues we're having have to do with the site plan, and so, in fact, I'd say all of the issues.
I just have one question on the revised site plan, just because I can't read it. On the, on the easternly parking space that would add, added, does that say compact cars only?
The west of it, yes, that's showing compact cars in those parking spaces. And that was part of the ongoing discussions with the Butters.
So I just would propose that we continue it for now, and we'll get some feedback from the planning board, and pick it up again when?
This needs to be updated. January twenty-fifth, we have four hearings and one continuation. Again, on the continuation, you're waiting for a site plan review. That's about the only time.
January twenty-fifth?
Unless you want to go into February, which I'm sure the applicants do not want to go.
You know, four, it's not that many, right?
We have four, and then this would be five.
Plus a continuation, this would be your fifth one. You could start earlier, as I always push, to have you start earlier.
Is six o'clock reasonable to start? For the other members?
You could do six.
Continue this one at six?
On the twenty-fifth?
Yes. Is the twenty-fifth a good date for?
Yes.
Yeah, reasonable. Okay, so who's going to make the motion?
I'll make the motion to continue hearing number ninety-one seventeen to the twenty-fifth of January at six o'clock.
About second.
Okay, so Edith and Kim, January twenty-fifth, here in Town Hall, six o'clock. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll see you then.
Thank you.
All right. That brings us to oh-nine-three dash one-seven, Falmouth Service Center, one forty-one Sandwich Road, a special permit to construct six thousand four hundred and eighty square foot building for philanthropic use, thrift store.
Just the ones with the black mark.
There's an electronic pointer of the, in the podium.
Being all persons deemed affected by the Board of Appeals under Section eleven of Chapter forty-eight of the Massachusetts General Laws, you are hereby notified that the Falmouth Service Center Inc. of Falmouth, Massachusetts, apply to the zoning Board of Appeals for a special permit pursuant to Sections two forty dash thirty-eight F, two forty dash three C, and two forty dash sixty-nine E of the Code of Falmouth to raise rare commercial building and greenhouse structures, six thousand four hundred and eighty square foot building for philanthropic use, thrift shop on subject property known as one forty-one Sandwich Road, T-Ticket, Massachusetts. And for referrals, I, we received the site plan review decision from the planning board. The, the planning board referral was just that the applicant was before the planning board on November fourteenth, two thousand seventeen, for a site plan review, so we've now received that decision. Fire department had no comment. Assessors parcel ten, eleven, twelve, and twelve B. Kong Kong must file notice of intent application, freshwater, wetland probable, vernal pool behind property has been, past violation of property at east northeast corner. Engineering says the application was reviewed for a planning board site plan review, see attached, Sandwich Road is public right-of-way in this area. The words shown for the entrances will require filing a permit with the engineering division. We will require proper abandonment of the existing entrance, including sidewalk and curving. Any connections or alterations to public utilities would require permission from the appropriate town department. The project, should say, does not appear to direct any stormwater runoff to proper, to public property, Butters are rights-of-way. Drywells are proposed for the proposed roof. We received thirteen letters of support, one letter with no objections, geez, another high number, three hundred and thirty-two signatures of support. Eighteen F, three hundred and thirty-two signatures, did not include a name and/or address. And that was not a Roman numeral, that was actually three hundred and thirty-two, that's right.
Okay, Attorney Ahment.
Thank you, Mr. Foreman, members of the board, good evening. I'm Bob Ahment, I'm Falmouth attorney. I'm honored to be able to represent the Falmouth Service Center, Falmouth's premier nonprofit. Members of the Service Center board are here. Executive Director Brenda Swain is in the audience. Jeff Oppenheimer is here, he's the president. Kathy Kleegler, the vice president, is here. And Brian Keck, who is the building committee chair for the Service Center, is also here. We're dealing tonight with property that's owned by one forty-one Sandwich Road Incorporated. That's a corporation owned by Bob Burke, well-known to the board, well-known developer and business person in Falmouth, and Bob is here. And plans for the Service Center project were prepared by Mike Borselli, a professional engineer, who's right in front of you, and hopefully will be able to advance the slides that are in front of you because it doesn't seem to be working with the device here. Give it a try. So, the application seeks the permission of the Board of Appeals by special permit for the Service Center to erect a building on Sandwich Road, and this picture in front of you is simply an aerial, an area map from the town of Sandwich Road. And to the north or top of the picture is Sand, is Brick Hill Road, and then Sandwich Road extends down, and if we could advance that up, you'd see that to the south is Route twenty-eight. So the site is about two-thirds of the way from the Route twenty-eight to Brick Hill Road. It's a piece of property that actually has been in commercial space, commercial use for many decades. It's across the street from Jake's, a restaurant, and at one time, it was a nightclub there named Zach's, and the property in question was all used as paved parking, and we actually have an aerial photograph that will show you that. And that's significant because some aspects of the site are pre-existing non-conformances, which are being taken advantage of in this application. We are reducing non-conformities, but still, in some cases, lot coverage have a non-conformity. So, the Falmouth Service Center, as many of you know, is much more than just a community food pantry. The Service Center and its more than four hundred and fifty volunteers provide assistance such as obtaining government benefits, helping people obtain government benefits, financial assistance from the Service Center itself and other aid organizations, and the Service Center assists residents with access to health care. The Service Center provides clients with clothing and household items, holiday dinners and toys, and sponsors community gardens and community meal programs. For many years, the Service Center has had a thrift shop in the town-owned Emerald House on sixty-seven Davisville Road in East Falmouth. It was a, and is still today, a rather small facility, which limits the Service Center's ability to expand, to serve people, to take in goods that can be recycled, and provide clothing that is given away at the Service Center's main facility on Gifford Street. So the proposal of the Service Center is to construct a new thrift shop in a sixty-four hundred square foot building on this site to be able to better serve people. The building will be used to receive donations and source material donations for distribution to clients at Everett Street, or for sale at the thrift shop. The proceeds from the thrift shop operation will be used to further the Service Center's mission, which is to ease stress and reduce hunger and improve the quality of life for our neighbors and needs, and to increase self-sufficiency by helping to build networks among clients, neighbors, and agencies. Now, if Mike can advance this, we've, uh, let's see. These are the, this is the existing conditions plan, and you have this in your, your file. You can see what the remains of greenhouses that are here. It's an existing building. This is a building that is actually enclosed on three sides to the roof, but open from the south. And again, remains of buildings here, then an existing building. This is an eighteen-hundred square foot building. It was constructed in around two thousand. It has, it's a retail space, it was permitted for that. It has a, two bedroom, uh, two apartments on the second floor, also properly permitted, and which are occupied today. Site plan, as you'll see, shows that this is a split-zone property, and the business line goes here and about like this, and then like that. The rest of the property is agricultural, B-zone, and it's a business two-zone. So that's the existing conditions. And the aerial photographs I show give you some idea of the conditions it was, us probably evolved into the site of its eye, and most of the property is in, quite, disappeared. Maybe you can advance that. So here's some photographs about showing the histories. Remember, when you have a case that involves non-conformances, sometimes it's a challenge to show what the, what the history was. This is a great photograph, because those are the property lines, and those are all paved parking spaces. Nineteen seventy-five, and it served this nightclub across the street. So that was what we start with, this predates when there was limitations on lot coverage principles, which first went into effect in Falmouth in the late seventies after this aerial photograph was taken. After the nightclub ceased operation as such, David Drew bought the property in mid nineteen-nineties and built these buildings. This is, the building that exists today is not yet shown on the plan, it's up there. I have that right. So these, these are agriculture buildings, this is the greenhouse, the development of property extended farther into what's now town land. The area that was paved was still paved, this parking zone here, cars park, and although you can't see it on this photo very well, this is all paved, and it's still paved today. And the pavement that's on the site, all along this parking line right up to the street, in fact, extending into the street layout, is the pavement that existed in the late This is a two thousand seventeen photo showing where buildings have been removed. This is the building that was supposed to remain, eighteen-hundred square foot building with two apartments. This tower would be removed, everything else on the site would be removed, shed back here again, to be removed. You can see that, I think, there's parking on the side, and it's, again, the pavement extends right up to here. This point where this telephone pole is, actually is within the town way, so again, the pavement extends into the town way. The curb cut is well over forty feet wide, which is not, not conforming. So Mike can be sure, I think this might probably be the proposed plan. This is a plan that I also have on the board, followed up. So, as I said, all the buildings are proposed to be removed, except for this eighteen-hundred foot building, it was meant for retail use, and owned and leased by Mr. Burks Corporation. Mr. Burks is going to build this new building, I recall, I think it mentioned about ninety by seventy-two, it's just off, but it's sixty-four hundred and eighty square feet, with a porto awning across the front, and a garage door for deliveries over here. And the large curb cut is going to be removed, there'll be two curb cuts, both conforming, and the project has been reviewed by the planning board on the site plan review, and we have their favorable approval, in your file, then also we do have. So this is a one curb cut, they need to park along the Service Center building, areas that are here for drop-off, people donating goods, parking in front of the building, and you have spaces, some parking here, move the parking away from the street a bit, it's still, some parking is within the front yard, probably got a room for significant landscaping where there's virtually no landscaping in front of the parking now, we'll landscape out into the townway as far as the existing site. The other curb cut, we use more for access to the retail building, plus there'd be shared parking that the Service Center would use as needed, as we've found here in principle, on the north side of this building. The Service Center has entered into a long-term lease with Mr. Burke. The site is a split zone, as I said. The business zone, the retail use, will stay primarily in the business zone, just as it's been permitted. The new Service Center building will actually be almost entirely in the agricultural zone, in which a philanthropic use is permitted by special permit. We would also note that the existing lot coverage is non-conforming, it's about sixty percent as shown on the plans. We are proposing an increase in lot coverage to about sixty-three point three percent, that's one percent less than shown on the plans originally filed because there was some change to the parking in this area requested by the Conservation Commission. change to the parking in this area requested by the conservation commission to move the pavement away from weapons, which are on town, are for use for drainage from Sandwich Road to the east. So, we have nonconforming lot coverage as is, but the lot coverage will become sixty-three point three percent. We also, again, as I mentioned, have proposing some parking in the front yard, but this is an existing condition which is being substantially improved upon. Now, both of those nonconformances actually could be addressed by special permits from the planning board. We chose not to seek special permits from the planning board because we clearly have this pre-existing nonconforming condition, and the Board of Appeals can grant a special permit. But I think you might take into account that the bylaw actually allows a special permit to increase lot coverage to more than is otherwise allowed in the bylaw when certain conditions are met. We've, that's under section 240-69D of the zoning bylaw. We've submitted correspondence to the board that shows we actually meet all of those And in addition, the planning board can allow parking within the front yard by special permit. So, when we ask you to allow parking in the front yard and a slight increase in lot coverage overall, not by the buildings which are conforming, but just by the total lot coverage, I think it's significant that the bylaw actually allows the planning board to do that, and we think that the Board of Appeals obviously can do that in this situation where we have the pre-existing nonconformances. I think I've probably answered all the questions, or told you probably you have some questions, but have presented information about this project that would allow you to grant a special permit, particularly combined with all the information we have. There might be a couple more slides we can show, however. Well, this is, these are building plans. The building is going, is a Morton building. It will look similar to the Jack and the Beanstalk building at, near the Thelma High School, and similar to the recently approved building that's under construction across the street from the high school property for Habitat for Humanity. Another project of Mr. Burke's, and so although this building will be only about two-thirds the size of that building that you approved. The next slide is another, other elevations of the building. The building will be twenty-three feet, four and a half inches tall, so it's a principal building, but it's fairly low. In the final frame, there actually is one more. This is just the floor plan showing the area where product will be sorted and cleaned and prepared, even if it's given away to clients of the service center or sold in their, in the thrift shop. There's one more slide. That's just a picture, not a very good one, I'm afraid, and taken this morning when, when everything was, was gray and white. And that's the Jack and the Beanstalk building that is somewhat similar to what's being I think that some of the staff and supporters of the service center will want to speak to you. We actually submitted a petition urging your support for this project, signed by, last count, was about three hundred and thirty-seven people. Also submitted a bunch of letters from supporters. This is an important project, so I don't think it has any detriments whatsoever. Will improve the site greatly and serve many, many people in Thelma. Thank you.
Okay. You're right, fifteen minutes, so that's good. So, let's see if the board has any questions. Jerry?
No questions. I think you did a good job in presentation.
Attorney Ahmed, I see that there's a shed that's listed as an encroachment in the southern corner of the property. Can you elaborate as to the status of that shed? If it is, if it's encroaching upon your applicant's property, or if it might be the other way
Probably it's encroaching on property owned by the town, and the intention is to remove it.
All right, so that helps out with lot coverage and all that. Thank you.
There is a note on the plan that's, that states that intention.
Kim?
Sure. So, ConCon mentioned that there was a notice of intent, or a notice of intent need to be filed. Was this?
The notice of intent has been filed. Mr. Porcelli actually presented the plans to the conservation commission is more familiar with it. I believe that it's accurate to say that the hearing has been closed, taken under advisement, that a decision approving the project is expected. Perhaps that, it's supposed to be issued within twenty-one days of the hearing, which would expire next week. And the conservation commission made a request that parking which extended farther to the north into the area where the pointer is, that there was three more spaces along the property line. They asked that the pavement be kept outside this, this line of fifty feet from the resource area. And so, that has been a revision. You have the revised plans. The previous plans didn't show these three parking spaces in this area. So, since the existing structures, both over here and over here, are actually much closer to the town's resource area, this plan is environmentally a better plan.
And then I just have some questions, just so I understand, in terms of what you're applying for with respect to the uses. So, you have a special permit use for philanthropic use in the agricultural district?
Correct, and the result would be that this building could only be used for philanthropic uses.
So, that concerns the easternmost portion, so not the...
Correct. The other, the other use that is the use of the 1,800-square-foot building that will remain will be retail on the first floor, or offices with the existing apartments on the second floor, and that won't, that doesn't represent a change of use. And that building presently is larger than it is. It has an L that will be removed, as I indicated. So, while the whole site is going to be subject to your special permit, and this is a mixed-use situation, and you have to review everything on the site, there's actually no increased use, no change in use to that building.
And so, I guess what are you, are you relying on 243, so change in pre-existing nonconforming use to that portion of the site? I'm just trying to understand.
No, 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 no. Because the, the uses are permitted, either by right at this point in the business zone, and that building has been there by permit for many years, or by special permit, which is the case with the philanthropic building. The only nonconformances that will remain are total lot coverage by parking, structures and pavement, and there is park in the front yard, neither of which can't be allowed under the bylaw, and both of which are conditions that presently exist and have existed since nineteen seventy-five, as shown on, on the, by the photographs that we've submitted.
Okay, so I guess, I also don't understand, so you're increasing the total lot coverage?
Yes, from sixty percent to sixty-three percent.
So, how can you do that on a special permit? Because you're saying it's not substantially more detrimental.
It's not a new nonconformance. It's not a new nonconformance, and a pre-existing nonconformance can be extended, altered, or changed by special permit. Furthermore, as I, as I mentioned, the zoning bylaw does allow lot coverage in excess of what would otherwise be allowed. And it's, that's a bylaw which is not well-known, and actually, although I'm sure it's been used at some point, I'm not aware of it, of it being used. But it's section 240-69D, says that for uses other than a single-family detached house or two-family dwelling, a percentage coverage by structures and paving higher than provided in subsection A of 240-69 may be allowed. And then it says, upon receipt of calculation prepared by a professional engineer indicating a stormwater runoff from the site will not be increased, that soil loss rate will not be increased. Then there's a calculation as to daily trip generation, not exceeding four trips per linear foot, which in this case would be over a thousand trips per day. We've submitted a traffic analysis by McMahon Associates about traffic and provided evidence of compliance with that. And on the determination, this is by the planning board that states, but again, this is 243, which puts it into the Board of Appeals venue, and the planning board has reviewed all this and is aware of this procedure and has approved the site plan review. The planning board's supposed to determine that erosion control methods employed in construction would be adequate to prevent excessive soil loss. So, actually, the zoning bylaw allows more than the lot coverage that's specified in section A if you meet certain conditions, which we do.
All right, thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, Ed?
What type of trucks will be used to deliver, pick up, to loading dock in the back?
I'm going to refer to that question probably to Brenda Swain, the executive director of the service center.
I'm Brenda Swain from Thelma Service Center, and we have a box truck that has a, one of those platforms that goes up and down. It's not really large, but we developed a turning plan as part of this that we would make sure that it could get in and out, because we will be picking up clothing from that site and bringing it back to the service center as part of our free clothing. So, that will go back and forth two to three times a week. We also will be recycling materials that we won't use, and that would just be like a pickup truck with a trailer that comes in. There won't be any other larger eighteen-wheelers or anything else like that that would be coming to the property.
So, you've already looked at that for that back?
Yeah, yeah.
All right, good. That's all.
No questions?
No questions.
All right, Bob, I have a, so could you just, because of the lot coverage issue, what is the amount of parking, and why do you need that much parking? And how many trips per day are you proposing for this?
Well, for the trips per day, I'd refer you to the traffic study that we have found. And they will tell you that the trips per day, the peak hourly rate, I believe, was thirty-three trips, and they concluded that that was no more than the agricultural use of the, of the buildings would be. Anyway, have, have that, they described the use as a low-traffic-generating use. The number of spaces shown is forty-six. When you calculate the parking that's required under the bylaw, it's forty-five point something, round to forty-six. One could reduce the parking by right because of, you know, under the bylaw somewhat, but we don't want to be short parking. This isn't a situation where there's other parking available on the street or, or the like. And we can provide this parking without having any adverse impacts whatsoever in terms of runoff and the like, which I actually talked about already, and which we submitted correspondence about. We could reduce the lot coverage by having a, probably to meet the, the existing lot coverage, simply by not paving some of the driveway in this area, and then we would, because we only count parking, paving, and structures. So, if the, if the travelway is gravel, that wouldn't count, but it's, it would meet a bylaw which is allowed to be waived without a public benefit, and it would be worse. Now, the lot coverage under the bylaw in the business district is allowed to be seventy percent. Our overall lot coverage is sixty-three percent. We're less than, than allowed for the business district. And actually, the lot coverage is being reduced significantly in the business district from, from eighty-seven percent, if I recall. I think it's to, it's quite a bit lower because of, we're just, we're removing, it's all pavement we're building now. This is a, a mixed-use, a mixed-zoned property. It's a little bit unusual, and in fact, the shape of the zoning is unusual. The history, that's a little vague. But we think this is the best plan. The, this property is presently unoccupied. This property, the neighbor has submitted a letter in support of this. This property is, you know, town property purchased, taken actually for drainage purposes. There's no occupancy back there. So, there is no advantage to making the service center design this project just to keep the existing lot coverage at the existing sixty percent when it works out better for it to be at sixty-three percent.
And what's the rationale for the two entrance egress points?
Maybe Mike should speak to that, but we think, I think it's fair to say that if you have the entrance over here, with this building in this location coming right to here, to, or to, to get around this building over here without having a separate curb cut that allows for the straight shot and is just not as good. We initially looked at a curb cut in this area. In fact, the initial reaction of the, at town was that that's what we should do. But then you have cars, including that box truck, entering here and having to make a pretty sharp turn around here. This actually works out much better. It also keeps separate the traffic for this building from this building. These two curb cuts are sufficiently designed to meet all the town standards. Neither the planning board nor the engineering department of the town has a problem with that driveway layout. Whereas the existing driveway, forty or more feet wide, is nonconforming. So, this is an improvement.
Okay, I think that's it from the board for now. Public? Comments? No public comment? What's the board thinking? Oh, do we have someone that wants to talk? Please do state your name for the record.
My name is Kathy Kligler, and I am the vice president of the Board of the Thelma Service Center. Thank you for hearing my comments. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the board, and I'm urging you to support our request for a special use permit so that we can go ahead with our plans for the thrift shop. As you heard from Attorney Ahmed, the Thelma Service Center's mission is to ease stress, reduce hunger, and improve quality of life for our neighbors in need. The service center has been doing just that for the past thirty-five years, and we hope to continue for many years into the future. The service center has been an essential multi-service agency working with businesses, nonprofits, donors, and clients to improve opportunities for residents to thrive by offering services to those in need and by providing many volunteer opportunities. More than a year ago, the Thelma Service Center's Board of Directors created a three-to-five-year strategy- created a three-to-five-year strategic plan that had as one of its central initiatives the expansion of our existing Emerald House thrift shop. The Emerald House thrift shop has been in existence for 16 years and has been very successful generating income for the service center, but the revenue generated is limited by the thrift shop's very small space. The board, as part of its fiduciary duty, believes that it's essential for the Falmouth Service Center to develop increased self-sustaining income as well as to diversify our funding streams as would be accomplished by an enlarged thrift shop. Grants have become more challenging to obtain, and consistent governmental funding is elusive. Our largest income pool at this time are individuals and community members. After the board chose enlarging and expanding the current thrift shop as one of their key strategic imperatives, a standing committee of the board was formed so that the proper attention was paid to the project. Board members have been involved every step of the way gathering data about best practices regarding thrift shop operations. We hope that you will help us further the Falmouth Service Center's mission of helping our neighbors in need by supporting our new thrift shop initiative so that we are able to meet expanded needs in our community and continue our work for many years into the future. Thank you.
I'll be really fast. I just want to let you know that this... Oh, sorry, Brenda Swain, the director of the service center. Just so that you understand, one of the real advantages of this project is that when we're planning to move our entire intake of donations of clothing and household goods to the new facility, which will mean that in our current existing building on Gifford Street, we'll be able to expand outreach as far as fresh vegetables and more frozen foods for clients. So not only will we generate more income through our thrift shop, but we'll also be able to carry out our mission on Gifford Street in a better way because we're freeing up some space to move things around in that building. So this project has multiple benefits for the clients that we serve. And we will still have a free clothing room on Gifford Street because that's really important to our clients, but all donations will go to the new facility. So thank you very much for your consideration.
Anyone else? Okay, so if no one else, maybe the, what's the board want to do? You want to discuss it all or close the hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay. Everyone happy with this? Is there concerns about any aspects of it?
I don't have any.
I don't have any.
Kim?
An improvement to the neighborhood.
I think it's, I think it's a great site for it. I would like to, I kind of have a hesitation in terms of extending, or, you know, the lot coverage. Just because there is, you know, I, I just think that if we could avoid that, that would be a good thing. And it sounds like there are ways to avoid that, to the increase. Now, does that outweigh the, you know, I think the project works with or without that. I would vote in favor, but I think it would be more kind of, no increase in total lot coverage.
I tend to agree with you. I think they got plenty of parking. I think, we're talking about three parking spaces. Or some portion of it being gravel, but I'm not sure the need to make it more non-conforming. But I don't know. What do you think, PJ?
I'm fine with the, with the plans as they're presented tonight. I know the property's had vacant for a number of years. I think it's a great proposal. And I think Attorney Ahmed, he addressed the issue with, what was it, 24070D?
24069D.
I'm sorry, 69D. I went with the wrong side of the paper.
Jerry?
Not a voting member, but I don't think the...
Still entitled to an opinion.
I know. I don't think that the increase in lot coverage is significant. And it appears the bylaw allows it without setting an enormous adverse principle. This is a nonprofit. I don't know if we can take that into consideration, but I think the other two board members have a point. But, you know, it doesn't seem to be rise to that level. I think you both said you'd approve it without it anyways. Oh, that's what I thought you said.
Kim said that.
And you agreed with her.
No. I think there's plenty of parking.
Well, can, is it before us, could we reduce the parking? Or is that, I mean, because site plan approved it with 46, so are we creating...
And he stated the need for 46, and it is better in this location to where there's no need for, or no...
So there's three parking spaces that they added, pulled back from the...
Buffered area.
Buffered area that they created, and if those were gravel, that would get it back within...
Well, and then when they're plowing in the winter or anything like that, they could just do a straight shot and almost not even worry about those.
I suspect they're not going to be heavily used. It's my guess.
I think that's reasonable if everyone else was on board. It might be sufficient if they're on board, yeah.
Yes, it is.
So what is it? So the 44, 45?
44, 45, 46.
Yeah, right. And that brings it, how did, did you do the calculation?
Well, a typical parking space is like 18 by 9 or something.
9 by 18.
Yep. It's the same as, last time I checked, it's the same as 18. So 18...
You can see those are actually...
18 by 9 is 162 times 3, it's 500, 486 square feet. The whole lot is 5,400 square, 54,000 square feet. So it's almost 3%. Certainly gets you within the 60.8. And then we just don't do any violence to the general principle that we usually follow of not making things more non-conforming.
Just for point of order, don't you even know why they want the parking?
Hearing's closed.
The hearing's closed, ma'am.
I know, you closed it, but you didn't say that...
Well, the attorney had an opportunity to make the case.
But you didn't...
That hearing is closed. We cannot take additional public testimony.
Mr. Chairman, I thought to a certain extent due to the traffic...
But, and by the way, and by the way, we're not proposing to do away with them. We're just proposing to make them gravel, which was something that was suggested.
Mr. Chairman, I had thought, I had heard that due to the traffic and everything else, the increased parking spaces would help. Gravel parking spaces, you can backplow them, and I think it's significant. But again, we're allowed to make an exception. It's one thing to be allowed to make a...
We are, we are. But the only time you're worried about plowing is in the winter. Winter is probably not going to be the super-busy period.
I just, you're still, you're still maintaining the spaces.
Yes, the spaces exist.
My concern is making something more non-conforming. And I know our bylaw says extend, alter, change. Generally, like Ken said, we don't make things more non-conforming. And that's what we'd be doing here, and if there's an opportunity to avoid doing that, I don't think it hurts because it's still available.
Attorney Ahmed said if, you know, a portion of it was gravel, that would accommodate the issue without a reduction in the parking, so.
Mr. Chairman, are we prepared to move on since these seem to be conditions?
Well, I, it's, we're at the point of discussion, and then if someone wants to make a motion and include some conditions and findings, we could do so.
I'm not allowed to, right?
You are not, unfortunately. But there are others on board that could.
Well, I'm going to make the, but I would move to approve with the condition that those three spaces were gravel.
Okay, I'll second him. Then we're done.
So, motion by chairman, second by, Ed, what other findings do you have? Yeah, let's make some comments.
So certainly an improvement to the site, and community interests as well. It's beneficial for the community, it's appropriate location for the project.
Well, I think you want to find that the proposal calls for increasing the non-conformity from 60.8% lot coverage to 63, and I think change 0.3.
You find that there was some, I don't know how to word it, though. The applicant's counsel did say that, you know, that you could reduce by putting gravel.
Yeah, by testimony, the applicant was amenable to reducing lot coverage through the addition of a permeable surface to a portion of the parking area. How about that?
I suppose we need to find that...
Does that, just make sure that that is what, that Bob acknowledges that's what he said.
Isn't gravel permeable?
Yes.
Okay.
Last time I checked.
And I would say that we would have to make, that the board finds that changing the surface of parking sp... I guess it's not numbers, those are just counts, but those three spaces designated, you know, between 44 and 46, permeable would...
Does it reduce the parking?
Alleviate some concern about the proposed increased lot coverage while maintaining the 46-approved spaces.
Okay.
Improving your curb cuts.
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Go conform to the wetland conditions when they come up, or that's automated?
Yeah, that's in the plan as it's shown, right? They brought back the...
Except they had, they closed the hearing and they had reported back.
Well, there was a limit of work.
243C and probably 24216 we also need. But I think it's important to say that the use in the front building remain unchanged.
So that's a finding, was retail and remains retail?
Retail and two apartments, which will remain.
Okay.
Suri, do you think of anything else?
Rest according to the plan, and then we're pending, are we pending anything?
Well, you made a finding about the conservation.
Right.
Right. So condition per plan with the exception of the change to those three spaces, to a permeable surface.
Could be a grass paper.
It's not good.
Yeah. Okay. You ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay.
Break. Break. Oh, Suri.
You want a break, Suri?
It's going to take them time to mill out anything.
All right.
We've got a little take on short recess.